This and future generations.
Thank you, Diane. Vice Mayor, any comments?
Trees are important.
Any comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, well, maybe, and council members. Would like to encourage everyone, if they would, please put in your calendar that Friday, April 29th, over at Tonto North Park, we will be having our annual ceremony there. We'll be approximating about 150 young people will be joining us from Acorn Monastery School, and we'll be planting a number of trees over there donated by Prescott Valley Growers and also Kaler Landscaping. So we thank everyone for their participation. But hot dogs, chips, drinks, all kinds of goodies, and saplings, little tree, baby trees, to everyone that's in attendance, limited to the first 500. So please come and join us.
What park was that again?
Tonto North Park, starting at 10:00 a.m.
Are you going to just put out a notice on that?
Yes, sir.
Email notice? Great. Any other comments? Well, thank you, Brian. Thank you for the good job and for Tree City. Next discussion, proposed purchase of upgrade for Click2Gov, online web payment portal. Mark?
All right, good. Get this adjusted to my height as usual. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I am in front of you here tonight to inform you of the opportunity for an upgrade to our online payment portal, Click2Gov. Currently, we have the version one, which was released back in 2002. In 2003, council and town staff came together and approved the purchase of our current version. So, jump ahead 13 years, we're still using that same version. As you can guess, it is quite outdated. There's been huge advancements in security and technology that we could now have the opportunity to utilize with this upgrade purchase. Since 2003, 13 years ago, there have been little to no updates or upgrades to this web payment portal that we use. Listed on the screen, you'll see a few things that are now available on the left side, which is our current version, and on the right side, you'll see the updated version and some very new features that not only the town, but our citizens will be able to utilize with this. One of the first ones being that it is 100% editable by the town. So we'll be able to format, design it, do web design for it. That way, it appeals more to, caters more to our customers. It is a multiple-language-supported system. Our customers will have the opportunity to choose whichever language they want to view this in and make them more comfortable with using it. English, Spanish, German, Chinese, like, there's about a list of 50 different languages that it can come up to. Enhanced security and credit card data will not be stored locally. It's all be through a web-based cloud and is a PCI-level compliance. Now, what that means is that it's a program designated to drastically reduce credit card fraud and liability towards the town. Starting from the beginning, when one of our customers brings up the screen, they'll have their login, they'll use their account number and their password, they'll log right in. If they have one account, that one account will be listed, and they can click on that account number and go from there. One of the things that we've heard a lot of suggestions for in the last few years is people with multiple accounts. We do have a lot of landlords, people that own multiple properties. What this allows is a master login, so you, that person with multiple accounts can see two, three, four, five accounts that they have listed, all in one spot. That way, they don't have to log out, log back in with their different one, log out, log back in with another one. It's all kind of basically a one-stop shop for them. The improved layout and accessibility, like I mentioned earlier, we're able to completely customize the format in which the webpage will be viewable by our customers. On the left, you'll see a current one. This is the login screen. I did black out the account number and the customer name, so don't let Bill Copie know back there that it's his account. To protect his identity, I blacked it out. But as you'll see, it's, it has some color to it, it has a town logo, the town name. But you will notice on the left side, the options to choose from are very small, condensed, kind of hard to read unless you really zoom in on your computer monitor. The one on the right would be the upgraded example version of what we could do. It's a lot more brighter, more colorful, more appealing, really gives that ease of use. It separates the information for the account, which makes it easier to see, okay, I am on this account, I need to pay this much, these are my options. One quick thing going back to this, with that, 100% being able to edit this, we could really make it similar to our town webpages, which would give that familiarity and comfortability to it. So even though they would technically be leaving the town website, it wouldn't quite seem that way. All right, so again, the current version on the left, as you can see, this is a portion of your account that's viewable right now. Again, it's small, condensed, and even I tried to enlarge it to kind of give like a comparison. As you can see, it's still small, a little drab. You can see that it might be older, maybe not 13 years old, but maybe a little bit older. On the right, you can see again, it's very bright, spread out, an improved layout for easier understandability, that's the upgraded view. So, making payments, if any of you have used this, you've noticed that sometimes it might be a little confusing when trying to log in, trying to make a payment, trying to set up a different type of payment, or schedule a payment, anything like that. What this does is immediately from when you check on your account and you click to make a payment, it'll give you walkthrough instructions step by step on what to do. Input the dollar amount you want to pay, input the credit card number, the expiration date. It's very hands-on, user-friendly. It sets you up for the different options. Credit card, you could set up a checking account, which is what we don't have now, and a very ease of use with an auto pay or recurring payment setup. One of the things that I hear quite a bit about is we have a lot of customers who set up their recurring payment, and then, like everyone's credit card, their cards expire. What'll happen is the system will notify them through an email that their card has expired, and so then they log in, try to change that. Our current system throws a few snags in the way. They actually have to call us in order to release that card, to then go back in and then re-enroll a new card. This system not only walks them through it, but it's 100% customer-managed, so that anytime they can change their auto pay, anytime they can enroll a new credit card, anytime they can enroll into their checking account. So that's one big feature that will deliver a higher caliber of customer service to our residents. Also eliminates that phone call to us, having to come in, talk to us to eliminate that old card. Also, currently, to set up through a checking account, you either need to come in or fax a, an informational thing with your bank account and avoid a check. This eliminates having to do that. So again, it's an increase in security by eliminating that exposure of our account numbers to the public. A big feature added to this will be account information. As you can see, these are two different options that a customer would be able to use to view their account and their account history. On the left, there's one view, which is a graph form, and they'd be able to see a 36-month history of what their usage has been by month, by year. On the right side, it's the same information, just in a different format, it's more of a list format, so you can see what it was subtracted from last month, subtracted from the month before that. There would be two ways to view your bills through this if you decide to use it just on the web. On the left side, you'll see a bill date, which will bring up a link, which will bring up a web bill for you, so you can see that example. On the right side, you might be able to see, it might be a little small, but you can see the icon for a PDF file. They'll show you your actual bill in a PDF file, you can print it, you can save it for your own records. So it gives a lot of flexibility and convenience to our customers. As I mentioned earlier, it is 100% customer-maintained as far as the security and the information goes on it. I've had a lot of calls, I believe a few of you might have received an email or phone call about the security of it with certain people who have higher pay grades having access to help customers through some troubleshooting. Some people appreciate it, some people don't. What this does is it eliminates that, eliminates the opportunity for anyone to get into the system who shouldn't be in there. It gives the customers that much more added security. So what I say customer-maintained, the customer will keep their address updated, their phone number updated, their email address updated. It also prompts them for password hints, security questions, that if they do forget their password, they can just answer those questions, and then they would have that opportunity to reset their password, or have their password revealed to them through a secure email. This also allows, one of the things that we're, we really do push is e-bills. It saves us money from printing, mailing, and using the post office to get our customers' their bill. They can enroll through this rather than enrolling through a phone call to us. It allows them to choose if they might be out of town, I want to get my bill this month by email. So it saves them time, energy, and it really eases them into managing their bill the way they want it managed. So, like everything, there's always a cost. The good thing is that this is not a purchase, this would actually just be an upgrade cost. I have it broken down. The upgrade itself, from version one to version three, is just over $2,000. One thing that will be added will be a cost per transaction at eight and a half cents per transaction the town would be charged. We run about 30,000 payments over the, our online right now. So it's about a annual range of about $3,000 to $5,000, depending on the usage of the web portal. Other services listed, it's going to be different presentations for reports run to see how many people are using it and that matter. One thing that is being eliminated, though, that we currently do is annual maintenance. So even though we're gaining a transaction fee, we're losing an annual maintenance, and it kind of negates itself out. So at that time, that's, I know, maybe, maybe quick and brief, but that's kind of the system that we're hoping to purchase. So at that, do you have any questions or comments that I can answer?
Mary, question?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. One is, how much is it when you, you just mentioned we're going to have a cost for the transaction? But we used to do upgrades, or, and it was a cost, we're losing one cost, but we're having another cost.
We're gaining one cost, which is the per transaction. So anytime, say you go online and make a payment with your credit card. It'll cost the town eight, eight and a half cents.
Okay. And what kind of cost do we have currently for, if any?
Our annual cost for maintenance on this currently is, it's about six or $7,000, roughly.
Okay. All right. And then the other question I had is, there is no cost to the citizens when they use this, correct?
None whatsoever.
Okay. And then, let's say they don't get here by 5:00. We close at 5:00, they can't get their water bill, but they're going to go online and they're going to use this. What is the cutoff time on this, or is there a cutoff time? Is it the same as 5:00 on a day that we shut our town down? Or will they have it?
This is a platform that the customer will have 24/7 access to.
Okay, so if they make their payment at 6:00 at night, will it be credited that day, or will it be delayed?
It will be credited that day.
Even though we're not physically in the building?
Correct.
Okay. And, okay, I think that takes me there. Thank you.
Yeah. Regarding e-bill and then auto pay, how far in advance will the e-bill come? Do you know?
The e-bills are actually a few days quicker than the mail bills. The bills normally get processed on Wednesdays.
I'm talking about, okay, if I have auto pay set up, the e-bill would come, let's say, on the 15th of the month, when will the auto pay come?
When will it be taken from your account?
Yeah.
The due date of the bill. So like if your bill is processed on the 15th, it's 20 days from there, so it'd be the next month on the 5th, that would be deducted from your account on the 5th.
So you're going to get a couple of weeks, or a week or two of advance, that you get the bill and then?
Yes.
So that if you get a situation similar to what I had a couple of months ago, they could say, wait a second, what happened here?
You can cancel that, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Laura?
You very quickly went over the other services charges, but it always bothers me when it's so broad and not defined. It doesn't seem really transparent to me about what other charges include.
Okay, so the $2,040 is for the upgrade and the installation. The upgrade itself and the install for the Sun Guard's tax to install it is the bigger chunk of that $2,000. The transaction processing is that payment server that we will be purchasing and the installation of that. The other services, about $2,400 of that is coming from a presentment program, which is what is going to show like that consumption graph, the PDF for the bills. It's those services that allows that to be compatible with the website. And then several hundred dollars for that installation of that. I apologize for not being more clear on that. Does that, does that help?
Yeah. Our citizens as well as us, we like the detail. We don't like a broad statement like other sources without breakouts, so thank you for explaining.
Sorry for not putting that in there originally.
Any other questions? You'll still take, take old-fashioned checks?
Of course.
Mike?
Yeah, I just was wondering, is there any recurring costs from year to year based on this upgrade?
No, once we pay this 8980, not including tax, but that'll be that one-time fee, other than the transaction fee.
So that transaction fee is going to be locked in, or is that?
The eight and a half cents is locked in, but the amount of transactions we do. So obviously, as we're continuing to grow, that annual fee, or that annual transaction fee will obviously go with it.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So you're saying that it'll still be the eight and a half cents, no matter how many customers, it'll just, right?
Yes. We could have 10,000 use it, it'll be eight and a half cents, we could have 1 million use it, and it'll be eight and a half cents.
And that stays?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You're planning to bring this back to us, Mark? Vote on?
Yes.
Everybody agree?
Hey? I don't.
Yeah, our customers are going to be happier with this.
I think so.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mark. Okay, we'll move on to number five, discussion, pavement, maintenance, and summer chip seal program. Norm?
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, what do you think, all the colors? Good evening, Mayor, Council. I am here to talk to you about the annual pavement maintenance program. Think council is well aware here, this past October, that you moved forward with voting in a half-cent sales tax in order to deal with our deteriorating streets and the call that residents have been telling you for years, we need to do better job with maintaining streets, and we need new revenue and put more money into our streets. What I'm here to tell you is, thank you, thank you, thank you for putting that into place. You had the courage to do what no one's been able to do, as you remember my presentation past October. The current mechanism for funding haven't been changed since '93 to rehash. The federal government won't increase the gas tax, nor will the state. If you recall from my presentation, we're one of only seven states that hasn't done a significant increase in taxing the ability to fund more in pavement maintenance. So Arizona is way behind, still haven't figured out how they're going to catch up, and I appreciate your courage to say, we're going to lead that charge, and we're going to take care of our streets here in Prescott Valley, because we're at a critical point in order to not lose that investment we've made in our infrastructure. So what I'm here tonight to tell you is what we've done as staff in order to meet that challenge with the additional funding and show you our pavement maintenance plan that we brought to you in October. As you can see, you noticed the colors, this is that colorful map that if you're aware, we've always talked about when we perform a chip seal maintenance, we color the map to know when it was done last. And obviously, we, some of our major arterias get done more frequently, but this way, we have a very methodical approach about which streets are coming up, and we apply all that revenue as much as we can in order to maintain the pavement lifecycle to the streets that need it worse than have been the longest since it's taken place. So, Councilmember, recall, this is the colorful map that we presented back in October, which is basically year one of what we proposed to you for the anticipated funding when we talked back in October. So what you can see here is the colors of what we proposed for chip seal maintenance, and what I have for you today is taking off some of the future years and showing you, this is our current plan for this coming fiscal year, '16, '17, which starts in July. As you can see, it's color-coded, and what it does demonstrate here is we have the different types of chip seals, the major arterias, what we call the high-volume chip seal, and of course, the low-volume chip seals is a different color, to demonstrate very much in line with this particular map you saw before. So we do have a plan in place, very methodical, as I say, in that there's a lot of maintenance preparation that was done already in anticipation of the chip seal. Councilmember, recall, we do crack seal, and you're probably aware when I showed you the picture of the three truckloads of crack seal, that's three semi-loads have gone into those rows that you see up there, in a methodical approach through an outsourced contract in order to get these rows prepared, in order to prepare the chip seals. So this is our plan. In synopsis, you see over there, in the proposed budget for '16, '17, with the additional revenue that you put into place in order to supercharge street maintenance, that we basically have $2.5 million we're anticipating, and we're going to spend it all. And as you see up here, basically, 1.4 million is going to be in the chip seals, as you see in the black and yellow, and the blue and, or, black and yellow and the blue and white, and then we are putting some money into overlays. Councilman Grossman, you brought up here a while ago when we were doing some maintenance on Robert, how come you haven't done Viewpoint? Well, once again, revenue, with that sales tax being put in, Robert Road had a greater need. As you can see, we're going to maintain that, but this current budget year, we're actually going to do an overlay, which is a more serious pavement structure that's necessary for Viewpoint. So we have sometimes different methodologies depending on the pavement condition. So we are going to do an overlay this summer season on Viewpoint Drive, as you see depicted there, from basically 89A over to Robert Road. In addition, we heard too that we would like to make sure that some of the deteriorating road edges and some of the settlements that can happen due to pavement over time, we've really are supercharging the amount of maintenance we put into it. In fact, to the tune of $500,000. That's basically double what we've put into pavement maintenance in the past. In the past, we've spent around $400,000, spent all we had, we're actually going to spend upward in the neighborhood with some of the other streets account. But as you can see, what's listed there in orange is actually next year's program, but in order to prepare it for a chip seal next year, we have a lot of maintenance to do with the edge patching and the like. So that's what you're seeing there. Want to go back a little bit about the courage that council had to vote the sales tax in. Just today, I got an email from the legislature and the Associated General Contractors Modern in the legislature. Just today, once again, they haven't really solved the problem, but they think that the HIRF diversions to DPS to the tune of $108 million a year. Keep in mind, typically, all that money is supposed to go for street maintenance, while all the diversion to DPS, they were hoping to just stop the diversions. Well, they've actually reduced that down from 109 million to, I think I saw, 96 million. So that's not final yet, never has been. So, yeah, while maybe that'll help, but if we waited on the legislature, we wouldn't get there. Just wanted to tell you, that hasn't stopped. It keeps me entertained, I guess, about the anticipated revenue, but we actually have the funding in place. We're going to go to this pavement maintenance program. The other thing I wanted to point out too was, just while we have your counsel, some of the pavement maintenance we do, obviously, this is done in advance of a chip seal, some of our last year's maintenance dollars, we talked about the crack seal, we used to maintain some of the better payments. And of course, this is a slideshow from a few years ago that in-house in streets, you can see where we do some road edge patching, and to get the wits back where some of the garbage trucks or some of the road edges broken away. In addition, you see, a lot of our roads, before we chip seal them, will actually take care of localized settlements and replace the pavement where necessary. So a lot of maintenance work will be done by our streets department, and I'll tell you, they're up to the challenge to have a funding source now in order to maintain the pavements in better condition. Likewise, here's some of the edge patching we do. In addition, one thing that we're able to do in this next year's budget, we're hoping that we can do a much better job with some of the hot mix patching. This particular piece of equipment you're seeing is a hot mix trailer, so during those cold winter months when you need to poach pat holes, we have in the budget to purchase a piece of equipment like this, a hot, hot patch trailer. You tow it behind a small dump truck, and we'll actually have hot asphalt, which does a better job rather than the cold mix. So you'll see this particular equipment, we're hoping to procure soon and do a better job with some of the pothole patching. Likewise, here's the finished product, think you're aware, you've seen it, here's actually shots in Prescott Valley of last year's contractor performing chip seal. As I mentioned, we anticipating having about a project about 1.4 million. Which leaves my next comment, that typical in the past, we like to take advantage of the new budget year right away. We've been praised by the contracting community that, once again, you're courageous enough to say, go ahead and bid it out, but don't spend the money till July 1st. So I'm here to inform council, if it's okay with you, that we have particularly let out the particular contract for competitive contractor bid, and we anticipate the closing bids around the time the budget is pretty well set, and then, of course, we will have that contractor set, but not give them a notice proceed until the 1st of July, which is a Friday this year, but we anticipate July 4th that they will get started with new budget year, new monies, and on they go, and they've got 1.4 million dollars worth of pavement. I also mentioned too that chip seal is done best during the warm summer months, so that's the best product you can get. So we're really able to take advantage of your ability to let us send it out early but not start until absolutely the new budget year started. So, out for bid right now, and we anticipate very good bids like we always get, and as I mentioned, one of the few municipalities that can take advantage of, we're ready to spend money July 1st. Most municipalities wait and their budgets aren't approved till mid-August, and their public works, street maintenance guys lose that advantage of the best prime time in order to do street maintenance in the form of chip seal. So that's out for bid, and we're looking forward to bids on May 2nd. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions I may have about our street maintenance program.
Questions, anyone? Mary? No? Larry? Comment?
Well, just a comment, the mayor and council, this is the largest budget for street maintenance in the history of the town of Prescott Valley, the largest. And it's certainly a tribute to you that you had the foresight to go ahead and respond to crumbling infrastructure and going forward and addressing the problem. And this is going to be an ongoing program that will not only raise the level of maintenance, but also raise the quality of the asphaltic pavement. And I have mentioned to Norm, I'm jealous, because I certainly never had this much money to go ahead and make improvements to our street system, and Norm is very fortunate, thanks to you, and we look forward to seeing the progress that Norm is going to make and his team is going to make. Now, I have a question for you, and that is, would you like a presentation like this concerning the other beneficiary of the half cent, which is that guy over there in the uniform? And the next work study, he can come up and, if you, if you desire, and show you what he intends to do with the proceeds, and I think there's some value to that if you're interested in it.
Harvey?
The answer is yes. Laura?
In addition to that, you know, we had some concerned citizens when we took this action, and I think it's very important that we report back to them. Many of them won't see this show, won't watch this, so I'm wondering if in our publication in our water bill, that both of your So I'm wondering if in our publication in our water bill, that both of your departments could keep our citizens updated, that we indeed are keeping our word and that funding is going exactly where we said it was going and how it's being utilized. I think that's only fair to, to give that information as openly as possible to all our citizens.
Do that more, Norm. Any other comments, suggestions? Mike?
Yeah, I was, I was just kind of curious on the, the blue line down in Stone Ridge, what street is that?
That's Old Black Canyon Highway.
Old Black Canyon?
If you recall, last year, we did the same treatment to Stone Ridge Drive and then we're new to the same treatment to that main line, Old Black Canyon, it has more traffic.
Right. So how far does that go from Stone Ridge all the way to the end?
Yeah, all the way, all the way to the cattle guard there, where the dirt starts again. As you can see, we're doing a small section of some of the residential area in there too.
Right.
And to talk about ongoing maintenance, as you can see across the street where you've got even more roadways, that'll be the crack seal program, because if you go back to the colored map, that's what's next. So as I say, very methodical. The thing that we'd like best about these exhibits is it's easily readable. If you're a resident and you say, well, when am I coming up next? Why did you go somewhere else? Look at the legend on the other particular map. As you can see, some of those other areas of Stone Ridge, they're still not non-colored because those actually going on 10 years also. So we've actually, a lot of the roads we're hitting in this year's program, especially the Granville, those pavements were older than the Stone Ridge, but they're approaching 10 years. So that's why they don't have a color and that's why right across the street of Old Black Canyon, South Old Black Canyon Highway, that whole area will be crack sealed and you'll see it. If I brought some more maps, you'll see that chip sealed next year and we'll bring that back to you. But as I mentioned, very methodical, you do the maintenance first and then it comes a chip seal program. As you can see this year, you know, all that orange area there, there's a lot of maintenance doing, that's where the half a million dollars is going to go, is tune up those pavements we talked about, the crumbling edges and bring those up, up to speed.
So crack seal will only occur in the areas that you'll be doing the, the other treatment as far as?
Correct. And that's, best, best applied to the maintenance dollars we have is, is to, you know, tune it right up to best, right before the, the chip seal application.
Okay. Mary?
I just, I, I want to thank you. I'm excited about seeing this investment into our community. I know the citizens are excited to see the roads repaired. We are like about 10 years due to all of the difficulties that we've had, so we're about 10 years behind. And if, according to the way the state goes, we had to do what we had to do, because obviously they didn't do very well on sharing, it looks like again this year. So sharing isn't, doesn't seem part of their program. But I look to see a very beautiful road system going forward and the citizens are going to be really happy. I thank you.
Well, I think the state has played games with us, they've pulled our funding, so we had to make it up some way.
Yeah, it's just, doesn't seem to be a priority with the state. They have lots of needs and I guess prioritization of our transportation network hasn't been one of them.
Right. Any other questions?
Hit ours.
Well, I was just going to mention then, we should look forward to next work study session to see the chief here to present your information. Would that be the next work study? Larry? Would the chief come at the next work study session that we have?
At the next work study session, I know that Brian is taking notes right now on putting together a presentation, talking about how his department intends to provide greater services with the $750,000 that will be proceeds from that half cent. And we've, we've gone through the budget process with it and I think that you will find that he has done a very good job, as well as Norm, in going ahead and doing exactly what has been represented that will convert to extremely good and improved service delivery in both departments.
Any other questions? Norm, it isn't unlimited, but I know you'll do your best.
We'll spend it all that we can and get closer to the end result that we want.
Any other comments?
No.
Norm, anything else?
No, I'll do it. Thank you, Mayor.
If not, we have one more item we got to take care of and that's to adjourn. Yeah, I'm sorry. Diane had a comment. Okay, well, we'll take care of that. Diane?
Okay, you've adjourned the meeting now, Mayor. As everybody knows, I had requested a mock action, just so we can ensure that everybody's iPads are working correctly. We can proceed with that. Anytime, I'm going to activate the adjournment portion of this again and I would ask that somebody try to make a motion, please, in a second.
A motion in a second? So-called vice mayor made a second?
Preferably, no. Okay. Councilmember Grossman, can you make a motion?
Okay.
Not make a commotion. Make, not a?
Mine isn't set up either for it.
Nobody's, nobody's is except?
I don't know how to do it.
I'll try it.
Should I screen up?
Okay.
We have to sign out and sign back in?
Don't. Shouldn't have to.
No, it's, it's not processing.
It's not working at all. Okay.
Oh, second. I got it now.
Oh, Councilmember Marshall did. All right, see if you can, okay, I will record that. See if you can all vote.
I can't vote. I don't have mine.
If you back out and then come back in, it looks like I brought it up.
Do we do?
Can anybody vote?
You'll have to tell us how to get this thing in there.
If you, if you click?
We're not getting it.
The backwards arrow on your, on the top left?
Backward arrow?